Yes, he's supposed to be. There he is. Guys, gentlemen, are you ready down there?
It's our turn.
Ready down there, gentlemen? Before your microphone.
Yeah, he's gonna be...
Okay. Are you ready? The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the City Council of Dennison, Texas is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be brought to us by Father Don Pershaugh of the Dallas Diocese and our friend.
Ms. Douglas, she ain't got your sign changed. Uh-oh. You know, this is the first day of spring and I thought there's probably nothing more appropriate for us to pray for fruitful seasons. And this particular prayer goes back into the 1780s when it was first published. Let us pray. Almighty God, who has blessed the earth that it should be fruitful and bring forth whatsoever as needful for the life of humanity, and has commanded us to work with quietness and eat our own bread, bless the labors of the husbandman, and grant such seasonal weather that we may gather in the fruits of the earth and ever rejoice in thy goodness, to the praise of thy holy name through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
And you all be blessed.
Thank you. This evening we are honored to have four young people, well, actually, there's five here. Is that four? Five, four? Okay, all right. That are gonna, that are gonna lead us, no, you don't qualify? Okay. That are gonna lead us in our pledge. So we have Lexi Pipkin, fifth grader from B MacDaniel, Caleb Jason, a third grader from Lamar Elementary, Jamie Pipkin, seventh grader from Scott Middle School, and McKinley Medlin, a tenth grader from Dennison High School. And they are gonna lead us in our pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, let the leaders of the state Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. At this point in our agenda, we leave time for any citizen who wishes to speak on any action item listed on the agenda. In order to speak, they must fill out a request to speak card by this point in our meeting. Ms. Wallantine, are there any requests to speak cards?
No, ma'am.
There being none, there will be no public comments. Consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve items three, A, B, C, and D on the consent, on the consent agenda.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance amending the required warranty period for public improvements from one year to two years. Ms. Sterns.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We talked about this at our last meeting. We're just updating the warranty period for all public improvements. The ordinance currently calls for one-year warranty period, all city projects and a handful of other projects. We've held to the two-year standard for a while, so this is just cleaning that up to be consistent across the board.
Questions for Ms. Sterns? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amending the required warranty period for public improvements to two years.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item four B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance adopting a new Public Works Design Manual. Ms. Sterns?
Good evening again. This one's a little bit more exciting for me personally. We worked really hard on this. We talked about this at our last meeting as well, and we're super happy to present it to you tonight. This is our new Public Works Design Manual. It's been in the works for a while. Our Director Ronnie Bates and Development Director Mary Tate worked really hard on this. This is going to set the standard for some of our subdivision, street, and utility ordinances for any new development and redevelopment in the city of Dennison. It also refers back to the NCT cog iSwim manuals for stormwater management. You'll see another ordinance come through officially adopting those manuals. And it's just a resource for builders and developers here in the city of Dennison. And I'm present for any questions.
Questions for Ms. Sterns? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance adopting a new Public Works Design Manual as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item four C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance amending ordinance number 5238 regarding updated standard construction details. Ms. Sterns?
Thank you again. This is another one we're pretty excited about. We adopted the most recent standard construction details at the end of last year. This version just has a couple of additional items in it that we needed a little bit more time to pull together. That includes a standard sign. So I know that a lot of you driving around town, we have a number of different street signs, so this is taking the standard that we've been using for a while and just making it into the rule. We also added a lighting detail, a major collector cross-section, and a number of other items. This goes hand in hand with our Public Works Design Manual. There were a couple of updates to this based on that as well. Both of these documents are living documents, so anytime we have an update, we plan to come back to council and present those major updates to you. And I'm present for questions.
Questions for Ms. Sterns? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance amending ordinance number 5238 regarding updated standard construction details.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item four D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance to rezone Lot 15, Block 5 of the Highland View Edition identified as GCAD property ID number 146981 from local retail to SF5 Single Family Residential, case number 2023-026Z. Ms. York?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to rezone property that is located on East Texas. If you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we had about seven of these items for this location.
Yes.
We only have one tonight, but it is for the exact same rezone parameters. The property is currently zoned local retail, and the applicant is requesting SF5 Single Family Residential. The proposal, or the survey that was provided shows that the lot does meet the development standards for lot width and square feet for lots that are zoned SF5. This does comply with the comprehensive plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval at their meeting held on March 14th, and staff recommends approval as well. I'm present for any questions you may have, and I don't think the applicant is here, but I'm present for any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. York? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve changing the zoning of the subject property from the local retail zoning district to the SF5 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Courtright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item four E, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance to improve a conditional use permit for the use of boat, sales, rental, repair, lots 14, 15, and 16, Block 32 of the original town plot of Dennison, in addition to the city of Dennison, Texas, as shown by plot of record in volume 28, page 362 and 363, Grayson County, Texas, identified as GCAD property ID number 142995, also known as 301 North Houston, case number 2023-027CUP. Ms. York?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to operate a, or a request for a conditional use permit in order to operate a, the use of boat, sales, rental, or repair. The applicant will actually be repairing carpet on these boats and then staging them in the back of the property, which is surrounded by an eight-foot metal fence. This is the subject property. It's located at the corner of North Houston and West Gandy Street, and it is currently zoned commercial, which is what prompted the conditional use permit. This use requires a CUP, as do most of our, excuse me, our auto repairs, and therefore, that's why the applicant came forward. The eight-foot metal fence does screen the property solely from the residential zoning district that is to the west, therefore, no other screening requirements are needed. This is a survey of the property. There is a requirement in our ordinance that requires landscaping of 8% of the total lot area. Staff is recommending that the council consider adding a condition to where the applicant has to sod a front portion that's kind of adjacent to the alley in order to make up for that landscaping requirement. The front portion is all concrete, as you can kind of see from this picture here, which makes it kind of hard for the applicant to meet that 8% landscape requirement. So in order to accommodate that, staff is recommending that little patch be sodded. It's currently patchy grass and gravel, and so we felt like that would be a pretty good area to clean up and then to also add landscaping. Furthermore, staff is recommending a condition added to the conditional use permit for prohibiting parking in the right-of-way. The applicant has plenty of space in the back, not only to stage boats, but to also provide guest parking, and therefore, just to make sure that that's where the parking takes place, staff is recommending adding a condition to where they park, no parking in the right-of-way. You can kind of see here in this picture, and this is from about a year ago, there's a truck parked in the right-of-way. So just to make sure that that's not something that we see, we're recommending that that's a condition added to the conditional use permit. Based off of those two things, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the CUP as it is with the two conditions of requiring sod being laid in that front portion of the property and prohibiting parking in the right-of-way, and that was at their meeting held on March 14th. Staff recommends approval with those conditions, and then I'm present for any questions you may have, and the applicant is also here.
Questions for Ms. York? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Does council have any questions of the applicant? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve a conditional use permit for the operation of a marine repair shop for property located at 301 North Houston with the conditions of, number one, laying sod in front of the property on the, on the portion of the property, and number two, prohibiting parking in the right-of-way.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item five A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an ordinance considering all matters incident and related to the issuance, sale, and delivery of City of Dennison, Texas Combination Tax and Limited Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2023, authorizing the issuance of the certificates, approving and authorizing instruments and procedures relating to said certificates, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Ms. Osoball?
Good evening. On January the 17th of this year, council approved a resolution directing the publication of notice of intent to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation not to exceed $42.5 million. Notices were published on January the 22nd and January the 29th. Funding from the certificates will be used for, to finance water and sewer infrastructure projects that were discussed during the fiscal year '23 budget process. Pricing on the certificates occurred today, and we are here requesting that council approve the ordinance, authorizing the issuance. If approved, funding will, is scheduled to occur on April the 19th. Marty Schu with Hilltop Securities is here this evening to discuss the pricing and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Marty Schu with Hilltop Securities, who represents the city, is your financial advisor. We put together these brief sale booklets to go over the results of your bond sale today. I am very pleased to report you had a very favorable market response. Your underwriters, Stiefel Nicholas and U of U, released the bonds per sale this morning. You had very strong orders that came in, and I'm pleased to report that they were able to provide a bid to underwrite your bonds with, that produced a true interest cost or TIC of a 3.79%. This is a great rate by today's standards. Our markets have been very volatile, up and down. Just to give you an idea, if these bonds priced two weeks ago, we would have estimated they would have been about a 4%. So we're very pleased with the results. Behind tab one, we've included a full set of the final numbers for you. You can see they are being structured over a 20-year period with equal annual payments to net the city $42.3 million for, to pocket for your construction fund. And then a large, a very large reason for the favorable result is directly due to the high credit ratings of the city. So as part of the normal bond issuance process, the city did have to apply for and purchase a bond rating. So staff had to sit down with two rating agencies, both S&amp;P Global, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. They had to provide a lot of information, answer a lot of questions, so that both agencies could conduct a full credit assessment on the city. And I'm pleased to also report that both Standard &amp; Poor's or S&amp;P Global did affirm the double A minus credit rating of the city, and Fitch affirmed the double A credit rating. So this is very significant because the credit ratings are much like our own personal credit ratings. The higher your personal credit rating, the lower the cost of borrowing when you go to apply for a mortgage or buy a car. Same holds true for the city, so the higher your credit rating, the lower the cost of borrowing when you issue bonds. It's significant to note that Fitch has you one notch above S&amp;P, and you're only two notches away from a perfect score on Fitch, and you're three notches away from a perfect score on S&amp;P. So congratulations, you're in a very elite category of rating. Behind tab two, we have included the full writing reports, those detail out, the assessment that they provided, and I encourage you to read those because they do hone in and focus in on the strong management of the city and the very strong financial performance of the city. So all in all, we think you should be very pleased. This is the final step of the bond issuance process, so by adopting the ordinance before you tonight, you are effectively locking this right into, in place and accepting these terms. The bonds will then go to the Attorney General for their approval, and you will receive the funds on April 19th. I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance considering all matters incident and related to the issuance, sale, and delivery of the city of Dennison, Texas Combination Tax and Limited Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2023, authorizing the issuance of the certificates, approving and authorizing instruments and procedures relating to said certificates and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item five B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an ordinance amending the city's FY 2023 comprehensive fee schedule by adopting certain fees for encroachment agreement licenses on cities right-of-ways. Ms. Ford?
Mayor and council, thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the fee schedule and give the city manager authority to enter into encroachment on easement agreements. On occasion, the city receives requests from individual property owners to allow some portion of their improvements to encroach in the city's right-of-way. In order for them to lawfully be there and not be trespassing, this ordinance would require someone to submit an application to the city seeking approval for that encroachment, and then if approved, they would enter into a written license agreement and be required to maintain appropriate insurance, et cetera. And then the city would do annual inspections to be sure the encroachment is being maintained in a safe manner and not grown larger than what was approved. The proposed fees in the ordinance before you are for residential properties to pay an application fee of $500. For non-residential properties, including MF1 and MF2, that they would pay an application fee of $900. And then for those non-residential properties, they would have an annual renewal fee of $700 to cover the city's cost of inspecting and being sure they received the renewed certificate of insurance. And then the city manager will have the authority to develop a policy and enter, approve and enter into those agreements when applications are received.
Questions for Ms. Ford? Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance amending the city's FY 2023 comprehensive fee schedule by adopting certain fees for encroachment agreement licenses on city right-of-way as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item six A, project updates. Receive a report and hold a discussion regarding the water plant master plan.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Happy to be here to introduce Plumber and Associates, who will be providing an update on the status of our Dean Rylent Water Treatment Master Plan. This master plan has been in the works for about two and a half years now, and with the help and assistance from Public Works staff, has recently been finalized. You should all have received an executive summary, your individual copy of an executive summary of the master plan at tonight's meeting. The full version of the master plan will be provided to council at your next scheduled meeting for your consideration and potential adoption. But to provide some high-level context for the master plan that you will be reviewing in the next meeting, I'd like to introduce Alan Tepper with Plumber and Associates.
Mayor, council? Like Irvin said, we've been working on this for, for a couple of years. We've gone up to the water plant and evaluated all of the structures, as well as the condition and the performance of each one. What you see on the screen is the, is the current site of the Dean Rylent Water Treatment Plant as it sits today. It's, was constructed back in 1940, and since that time, has gone through a number of expansions and improvements. Quickly looking at just the process of those expansions and improvements, down in the bottom right-hand corner, those little white buildings, that was the first water treatment plant. You can see circular structure there that's kind of grown over anyway. That was the first area. Then it was expanded in 1953, followed by a larger expansion in 1976. That's the gray building over on the left-hand side. Then there was a major improvements in 1990, 1993, which included another clarifier, then followed by an expansion in 2008, which included the two-million-gallon ground storage tank and improvements to the pumping facility. In 2010, we made improvements to the raw water pump station that's, that's located on Lake Randell. I'll get to that in a second. Just, this is another aerial view of the total water treatment system. Looking at the, I'll, I'll take you through the red line first. At the top of the page is the lake, it's pumped from, from Lake Texoma, it follows the, the solid red line to, to just south of Highway 1310, where it discharges into an open channel, then it's open flow, open channel flow through the creek into Lake Randell. From there, it's picked up at the pump station that I was talking about being built in 2010. There in red is the new pipeline then that takes that flow into the water treatment plant. So that's what's existing today. I'll take you through the, the blue line, the dark blue and the light blue, which is being constructed and some future pipelines in the future. So currently, as you know, we're in the process of constructing the, a new intake pump station on Lake Texoma. That's going to consist of, of a new pipeline going all the way to Lake Randell and discharging there in Lake Randell, and then again, picking it up, the flow in Lake Randell by the, by the red line, the dark red line. And then the light blue is a future pipeline that we envision that would take the flow straight into the water treatment plant. This is a quick graph of the population and demand projections. The city not only provides water flow to citizens, but also a number of wholesale customers. So looking at the, what the population demand and future projections would look like is shown on this graph. Currently, the, the plant is sized for 12.8 MGD, and we're currently working on an expansion to take that treatment capacity up to 24 MGD. You can see the, the light dash line shows a projection that TCEQ made, or Texas Water Development made a number of years ago, and we're looking at, we think the projection is more like the dash, the dark dash line that's, that you can see there, a population of 48,000 out there in about 10 years or so. So just the aggressive population, I mean, everybody wants to move to Dennison, right? So, so looking at what the future may hold, we think that the, the 24 MGD expansion should, should take the city out to about 2033, although we're showing it all the way to 2050, but we really think that needs to be evaluated, you know... think that needs to be evaluated, you know, each year. And our best guess today is that you're looking at another expansion out in about 10 years. The master plan identified gold in what future projects might look like. We looked at increased treatment capacity, which included conventional filter upgrades, just some other treatment projects there listed on the right. We also looked at the water quality and the security aspect of future expansions, which includes going to reverse osmosis to deal with the salt coming in from Lake Texoma as we're increasing that flow, and then just modernizing and just the assessment to the site and making it more, like I said, more secure than the previous one, but looking at a new lab and operations building, as well as a new training facility. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council? Alan, thank you for all the work.
Thank you.
This gives us a direction to go, so thank you. This is an information item only and does not require action by council. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene in executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with this chapter and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551.071. Confer with city attorney regarding real property in the general area of US 75 and FM 84. Confer with city attorney regarding trails at Waterloo Lake Park. Confer with city attorney regarding 2824 West Crawford, Cause Number CV 230268, Grayson County, and 1527 South Austin, Cause Number CV 230267, Grayson County. Confer with city attorney regarding city-owned property. Discuss the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of real property. Public discussion of such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position, Section 551.072. Real property in the general area of US 75 and Highway 84, trails at Waterloo Park, and city-owned property. Deliberations regarding economic development negotiations pursuant to Section 551.087. Discuss information received regarding development prospects and tax increment reinvestment zone number two. The time is 6:32, I think, yes, and the council is now in executive session.